First item is the water sewer and stormwater management. Mr. Baker, thank you for taking the time to be here tonight. We'll let you begin.
Okay, we'll hit the quicker topics first, the water and sewer issues. We have, you know, the Moore's Mill water section up there for Fruitland has all been completed. Everyone but three houses have signed up for the water and we've re-forded those last three onto the health department so that when they can take the next steps to getting their storms water if and when they're ready for it. The other water issue that we have, oh, sorry. The other issue, water issue we have going on is the airport water main extension. I met with our design engineer, GMB, last week. They have all of their survey done and they have the preliminary slate, or rather, the preliminary layout for the main. Made a couple little adjustments to try to keep the main a little more easy to maintain, some valves at appropriate locations, fire hydrants, that type of thing. But they're moving forward. They are reaching out to the airport right now to determine the best way to connect into the internal structure of the airport. But as far as the actual, the path of the mains been, you know, I would say it's probably about three quarters done. It's, you know, it's now just a matter of filling in the details beyond that. We have the water and sewer master plan that we are still pursuing. We've gotten some preliminary pricing back. It's going to run about, looks like about $250,000 is what we're either going to be asking for in future budget, or we're going to see if we can't piece together some remaining funds from projects that weren't, didn't use all of their money and piece that together and see if we can't fund it that way. So you'll be seeing a memo about that with unused paygo and unused bond funds to try to move forward on some of those projects.
The fund, I'm sorry. I lost you there for a second.
I was saying, we were either going to have to either program the money for the water and sewer master plan either into the budget or you potentially use unused paygo and bond funds for, for that fund.
To prepare the master plan?
Yes, exactly. You know, because right now, we, again, we've talked with several consultant firms based off of the scopes of work and it's looking to cost about $250,000 for the, for the completion of these county-wide water and sewer master plan, which was not included in this year's budget. But again, it looks like we could use unused bond or paygo funds. That we have to work the details out with finance, number one, to make sure it's something that we can do, in which case we then have to come before the council to reshuffle some of those unused monies around. So we're just, we're just looking at ways, potential ways to fund it.
Got a question.
Yes.
You're going to be asking us for $250,000 to pay for the master plan or consultant fee. Does that mean you're adopting a master plan?
No, no, we haven't, no, no, sir. We have not even-
That's just work on it?
That is to develop a master plan, to come up with recommendations for how, what is the strategy the county wants to employ to provide water and sewer service to areas of the county that currently don't have it, that may not have the ability to have it in the case of, you know, some of these older lot sizes are small. If they, their septic goes up, they don't have the room that they need under current regulations to rebuild a septic tank.
Okay, so the clarification here is that we're not talking about, we're talking about water, a water and sewer authority.
A water-
We're not talking so much about stormwater or anything. We're specifically-
No, no, right now, no, yes, right now, we're just talking about the, again, water and sewer. The agenda, the agenda I know is water sewer and stormwater. I'm starting-
No, I appreciate it. I just wanted to, the clarification because-
Yes.
For the public in general.
Yes, yes, we're just talking about sewer.
Okay, understood.
So, yeah, that's where we're at. But remember, we can, there's no questions on that. We can move into the stormwater, which I think is why most people are here.
Well, what makes you think that the $250,000, what do you think the bulk of that expense is going to be? Are you just talking about a study to establish the pros and cons and the costs?
Yeah, and to investigate what, what really is going to be the best way. We've got a lot of rural areas, what areas can be provided with water and sewer, you know, based off of, you know, for instance, if, if you have a lot of homes in a large clustered area, it's going to be significantly easier to, to address. Those are kind of, that's the low hanging fruit. But how do you appropriately address houses that are out and by the house? You know, or all the way, you know, for, you know, further out in the county.
I think what, what to me has, is written all over this is that we need state funding for this. I really think that's true. I mean, we're at epidemic proportions, is the wrong word, I think, but it is at a critical junction right now where we have failing septics, where we do have to try to figure out how we're going to get that addressed. And I think it takes something from a state level probably to implement this, more so than trying to do it on our, you know, all, all on our own.
And we did have success with the, with the, the water extension out to the sewer, or the water, the water extension out to the airport.
Right.
But this water and sewer master plan is the first step in providing that. The state generally doesn't just hand out money if you don't have a plan-
Right.
-of how you want to spend it. If we, if we go to the state and say, hey, we want to provide water and sewer service to failing septics, and they're going to say, how? And all we, and we can't provide a logical, clear response that's backed by the council, then it's going to lessen our chances of being able to get that state funding.
We did, we did just approve funding that the state granted to, to have planners for three local communities in Wycomica County, and that was strictly for a planning process in itself.
The circuit rider.
Yes, so maybe there's hope.
Yeah, yeah.
We also had this George Myers and, you know, George Myers and Burke-
The east side, yeah.
On the east side, we had that report done. I mean, it seems to me like we're jumping around. So we've done this study on the east side, but now we need to do a study for the rest of the county. I mean, I mean, without, we've not done anything to the east side since we've done the study. So we're going to do another study, I guess.
Yeah, the idea would be to take that study and where we have, where, yes, we did a study for the east side and do something similar, but county-wide, so that we can have problems to, or we can have guidance and a strategy moving forward as to how best, not only to supply them with water and sewer, the best financial methods to, to do this, you know. Is it going to be, well, it's just bringing a third-party utility and having plop in a package plant? Or do we have the closest municipality extend their services out to them? Then there's, you get into the issues with annexation. So it's, it's a multifaceted issue.
Other than the east side, and we know where the problems are, and I call it the Chesapeake Heights area, you probably don't know that, by that name, but that's what the old folks call that area along Lucian City Road. Is there, is there a lot of other areas in the county that they're subject to this right now?
The failing septics? Um, well, I mean, there's the, the trailer park issue out there to-
The Walston-
Well, Walston's Trailer Park, I know about that, yeah, but that's a private issue more so than a county issue. I mean, correct? I mean-
Well, these are all private issues.
Yeah.
Yeah, all the residences are private issues as well.
He's trying to handle that, and he's working with the state on that at this, at the time. So, I mean, is there, so you got that one. What else have we got a lot of problems that needs to justify a county-wide study, I guess?
None that I have been, that's been brought to my attention. I don't have anybody calling up saying, hey, I've got a community with a failing septic. Because my understanding that this approach with a water and sewer master plan was something that council was interested in, in approaching on a county-wide level.
During the council priorities, I believe at least three council members listed it as the number-one priority, so this is, this is the study.
That's not a majority.
Understood, understood. But it's still a concern that, that we took seriously, and the cost to do it county-wide had a huge price tag. You are correct that the east side, it was a very isolated area that some of the homes cannot be rebuilt because you would, you would displace wells. There's, there's rules on how close a well can be from a septic system, and by moving it to your front yard could impact your neighbor's wells. So, and the problem with that particular study is not only did they need sewer for the failing septics, they really need water, and then those older neighborhoods have no storm water which we can get into. There's no pipes and drainage there, so what would become a simple, let's see if the city will lend us some water, becomes can we get sewers well? Can we completely rebuild the roads? And the cost just is staggering at that point. So I agree, it's frustrating that we've identified an area with issues and we haven't really come up with a solution there yet.
When Pittsville and Willards had their issues years ago, and maybe some of the towns on the west side did too, I know the federal government stepped in and helped them with funding and loans and basically helped them probably design the systems and all that.
And is that something that we could look at in this, this east side corridor?
I'll say USDA has a rural development. And that's, that's what helped pay for a part of the Moore's Mill water project. MDE came in with the other one. Ideally, when the federal government steps in, there's usually a public health crisis, and ideally we fix things before all the septics fail in Deer Harbor, or, you know, something like that. We, if we, the thought behind the plan was any particular area in the county, if it had an issue, we can say, this is generally how we would try to treat it. And then we can put it as a CIP project and come before council, go for grant money. The plan helps get grants. Having, having a plan, planning and zoning can talk to it better, better than we can, but having a plan helps when you go for grants and so forth.
Will this study also look into having a private company come in and do it?
That is one of the options, yes. That's, yeah, that's one of the things that we'd be asking them to look at, is what's, what's the best, the best process? Is it, you know, a private package plant? Is it an extension existing? Is it something that's run by the county? You know, there's, there's a, you know, in a quick armchair assessment, there's the big three possibilities. And it might be that they, you know, the engineers who are doing the study might have an entirely different recommendation. Maybe there's a certain, maybe it's a hybrid of all of it. Maybe there's certain areas within the municipalities that have a buffer, say, look, you don't, you really probably, it's not feasible to go beyond, I'm just going to pick a number, three miles outside of the, the current boundary of certain municipalities provide water and sewer service to bring them in, simply because beyond that, you can't extend that gravity sewer much further without having to get into the lift stations and the cost. And, but then you've got little clustered areas that are further out, that that's where the package plants and the private utilities make more sense to, to try to get into. So I don't, I seriously doubt it will be a one-size-fits-all. It'll probably be recommendations of-
Well, I commend you guys for working on this because it's long overdue. I can tell you, I've talked to a lot of constituents that don't want to live in the city. They don't want to be annexed. So that will become a big issue. Will they have an option? We don't know at this point. It was about a year or so ago, we had a meeting at, Tri-County Council meeting at UMS, and there was a guy from the USDA there, and it's one of the things he talked about was water and sewer in, in the rural areas. And I got his card, and he doesn't work there anymore, but we can find out. I talked to some of the people on, at the Tri-County Council, and that's one of the issues we've talked about in the future, as a priority as well. Have you talked to anybody from Worcester or Wycomica or Somerset County?
No, I have not.
Because they have two different ways of doing it, two different authorities, I guess, you could say.
The sanitary commissioner in Somerset, yeah.
So that might be a good start.
Mm-hmm.
And, and another question I wanted to ask you is, how come you didn't ask for that $250,000 in the bond that we just discussed?
We, when we, so, so we have the bond going out that was approved earlier. It was not included in the CIP. We, we started developing and getting the cost estimates for the plan prior, I'm sorry, post the FY18 CIP. So we will intend to put it in this year's CIP. All the departments are, are working on their capital suggestions now.
So everything was committed prior to thinking about this?
Which we could have come and amended the, the CIP to add it, but we don't have a funding source yet. So, yeah, that's, that's where we are. And that, that need to be part of the budget, so we need to amend the budget as well. It's pulling teeth.
Okay. Any other questions on the water sewer? All right, stormwater. So I have a presentation, I believe it was in your, on your packet. It's a lot of the, the calls, emails, meetings, concerns have been from the, the August storms, so I'm going to, I'm going to start with our recap of what we experienced back this past August. On Monday, August 7th, we had, this was the storm that had the tornadoes that, that building next to Hoppers. We had three and a half inches of rain in one hour. We later on had about two more inches over the rest of the course of the day. So in that first day, we had about five and a half inches of rain. Now, that, that's important to note because what that did was saturate our ground and reduce some of the capacity of the, of the dirt to absorb some additional moisture that we were going to get later on, starting that Friday into Saturday, where we got anywhere from six to eight inches across the county. Through those, that, that August 11th and 12th storm, we had 14 roads damaged. We had two that were completely washed out and impassable, we had to block off and repair, and we had 14 partial washouts where road crews, we lost part of a shoulder. Road crews were able to get out, put some milling, some stone down, and stabilize it to prevent the entire road from going out. And those guys were out there round the clock, you know, 14, 20-hour days, making sure that these roads were open and, and stable. And, you know, I just, I can't give enough accolades to, to the roads workers for, for everything that they did out there. I've got, you know, a partial, or a list of our, of the different roads, but, you know, I think what we've been getting a lot of calls on recently have been on, obviously on Pratt Road and also on Kaywood. And part of my focus is going to, of this, is going to be on those two specific areas. So this is the NOAA map of our, of our rainfall distribution for that storm. And, you know, people say, well, nobody called from Sharp Town. And you can see in this map, Sharp Town got about one to two inches of rain during that storm. That little pink center right there in the middle is smack where Pratt Road is. They experienced the most flooding we had from, so they're the folks that caught the eight inches of rain. You can see other areas in the, in the darker reds where, where Kaywood is at. So again, these were the areas that were seeing the heaviest amount of rain, which was centralized to, to the county.
Is this a rain precipitation or is this a flooding?
This is the amount of rain on Pratt.
Because, I mean, I don't understand how you could, do you, I don't understand the map where you're saying that the most rain fell in the center of Wycomica County on Pratt Road. I mean, that would lead you to believe, and honestly, correctly, please, but that would lead me to believe that you're saying that the rainstorm stayed right over Pratt Road and just dropped eight inches there and nowhere else.
No, no, over, over the course of the, over the course of the storm, Pratt, that area, that, that area right there in the, in the, in the pink-
Right.
-that's what got the most rain over the course of it. It's not that the storm just stopped there, it's just that over the course of those eight hours, that, that area in there got the most rain.
This is a 24-hour-
Yeah, this, this is a full one day. This isn't like the storm just stopped.
This was the last storm that we-
I understand, I understand. I just, all right, I don't understand it.
It's hard to look at all those squares and then try to look at the outline.
I just don't understand how they can say that the rain predominantly stayed in one area. I mean, it's just-
Well, it's, again, it's not that the storm stood still, it's just that over the course of a one, over a course of a 24-hour period, these were the rainfall totals that NOAA calculated.
Pratt Road floods every time we have a major storm.
It would depend on how you're defining major. I think we, I have some clips that I can show of what we would see for our typical storms where the roads are not flooding.
Well, Pratt Road has flooded numerous times, and I don't think it's just because out of the luck of whoever's above dropped it in the center of Wycomica County every single time. I mean, I, I can appreciate the fact that you're saying, this is a map from NOAA, and it says that here's where the rain, but I, I don't want to get away from the fact that more so than how the rain is falling, it's how we're dispersing it. Because every, it seems every major storm we have, this area is impacted. And same with Kaywood.
Last summer, when, when they experienced flooding as well, there was the Nannicoke Road washout in June. That's about the same rough proximity as the Pratt Road. It's on, it's on the central to west part of the county. Barron Creek Dam, that tended to hit more Sussex County, but it's still a similar trend. We could go back and we should be able to reproduce these for every one of those storms, and we can look to see where did most of the rainfall. Our guys have been out there pretty much every rainfall since and see that things are flowing normal. Let Dallas' presentation speak for itself, but survey shots have been obtained and-
Yeah, I mean, we've certainly gotten significantly more rain over the last year and a half than we have in a, in a very long time, and hopefully this is just some weird cycle that's going to be ending soon.
I don't think so. I don't think so. I don't know.
It was about a year ago this week that we had a major storm, and your guys were out opening up the dams.
We had, yeah, we had storms starting in, in July of 2016, September 20, 2016. We had one in March of 2017. We've had them now, where they have been significant, storms that have flooded areas, the places that did not flood in Hurricane Sandy.
And it, it seems like it's getting worse, like Councilman Cannon said.
We've had, we've had four hurricanes, four more. I, again, I, I'm not going to, I can't speak to the why or-
Well, you know, they have dams in Louisiana now for a reason, because they know they need them. So I'm assuming that there's, the time has probably come where we need to recognize that there's more needed in Wycomica County.
Absolutely, absolutely. I could not agree more.
Well, and that, I mean, to pile on a little bit, you know, I mean, that, you know, there, you know, I've talked to Joe Holloway a little bit about this. He's like, well, you know, seven years ago, eight years ago, we were having drought situations. So, you know, it's unclear what the weather conditions will be, and it, you know, we are, I guess, at risk of maybe overreacting and maybe we're in a cycle. But it does seem clear from the weather we're having, I mean, you know, this is three times in the past 12 months at Pratt Road, that the current drainage, however it's designed, and whether it was designed well for, what, 15 or 16 years ago was normal, is not normal now, and it's not working now. So what, regardless of, you know, whether or not they got that localized rain at that event, you know, and, and I guess we can pray that doesn't happen again, you know, and, and I don't think they viewed it as luck that it happened there, you know, I mean, you know, it's pretty unlucky that it happened there, but, you know, I guess, you know, you probably will talk about this, but what, what can the county do going forward so that, you know, this sort of thing seems to be more normal now than it used to be?
Yeah.
So how, how do we fix their drainage specifically? And how do we have a county-wide strategy for dealing with what may be the new normal so this, you know, isn't happening not only at Pratt Road, but spread to other places?
Yeah, let me, let me cycle back to the, to the, our, what I'm going to call our, you raised a question about our design storm, and I'll explain that when we get a little bit further. And let, let me run through the presentation, let's, but yes, it's an issue we can address, but, you know, let me, let me, and we do have a strategy. I'm going to just make a note to myself. So just real quickly, this, this was our worst-case scenario for our road that went out. This was American Legion Drive when the road flushed out. The other one that rushed out was Stockley, but ironically, all the dirt underneath Stockley went and left the asphalt bridging across it. It wasn't safe to travel, but the picture is not nearly as visually impressive as this is, so.
Was there a culvert there?
Yes, yes, there was.
It washed it out?
It washed it out completely. Yeah, there's a, you could actually, if I, I don't have the picture loaded, but you can actually see the pipe further downstream.
Okay.
So, again, there's significant utilities running through there. There's a Verizon facility back there with fiber optic.
Broadband.
Yeah, the broadband, exactly. Verizon was very anxious to get this road reopened. And by, so that was Saturday. By Thursday, road crews had that road back opened. This has taken a couple weeks later because we've got the, the growth going on, but in essential, you know, we're letting the road settle out a little bit, and then we're going there and repave it.
Is that a larger culvert?
Yes, yes.
Oh, when you put the larger culvert in, how many, how many gallons of water are you allowing for? Because I'm assuming that's how you decide the size, as to what you think the potential of water going through is, right?
We did not do sizing caps. We knew, I'm, don't quote me on this, I believe it, we had a 36-inch in there before, and I believe we bumped that up to a 42 or possibly a 48. We, we increased the size to account for the additional water. It was a situation that, a lot of times we rely on kind of anecdotal and empirical evidence to, whether or not to increase the size of a pipe if we know that there's a problem out there.
Dallas, is this a county road?
Yes.
I thought it was a private road.
It's a glorified driveway.
So I guess the question would be if this particular road, because this is going to be relevant, I think, to all the other areas where we currently have culverts now that may need to be replaced. Recognizing that a 36-inch didn't work here, I think it's very important for everybody to understand how much was going through there and what caused so much water to go through, you know, what, how the water tables are, what's feeding into this area?
And one distinction with that is, this is a branch that runs underneath this road. This is not a dry drainage swale when there's no rain going through. There's always water going through here. It's, it's, it's a creek. There's always water. The, the majority of the ditches that you see through these subdivisions that have pipes sized underneath them are sized for a, again, to a specific storm, and that's how the sizes are determined. In this case, again, it's an actual creek, so we're trying to pass through the flow of the creek through the storm. It's, it's not a, it's, it's not been sized because there's not a subdivision or, or development that's gone in upstream, and that's why we have to put the pipe in. The pipe's in because there's a creek there, and we want a road over top of it.
You had said that you sort of increased the size by an anecdotal strategy?
Yeah, off, off the top of my head, I mean, you know, a lot of times I rely on the expertise of my staff. My staff has been here for 15, 18, 20 years. I've been here for seven months. I, I come in, I listen to their expertise, and they tell me, we really need to increase the size of this pipe. Okay, guys, you, you know these situations, I'm going to rely on your expertise.
What I'm leading to here is, if that's how the evaluation, or whatever that evaluation might have been done to replace this, to put the road back in, if we recognized similar problem on Pratt Road, because I know the culvert has been a very big issue on Pratt Road, could it not be anticipated that whatever science you're using or non-science you're using to decide the size of the pipe that went under this street, that maybe we should pretend there's a street we're trying to drive over on Pratt Road, and subsequently you should consider a larger pipe there as well?
Let me, um, let me get through the Pratt Road presentation, and I hopefully will be able to explain that it's, it's more than just dropping a larger pipe.
Understood, okay.
So, oops, sorry.
That area right there, you can keep going, that area right there, it looks like it was deep water at one time, other than a creek. It looks like it was-
Nah.
No, I mean, 200 years ago, I've seen maps that this area was covered with a lot of water, so I've-
Yeah, there were a lot of dams, you know. It's, you know, I mean, realistically, if you look at some of the old pictures of Salisbury, there was, you know, there was all, the park, City Park was underwater.
Right.
So, but yeah, I'm-
So the, is that a branch of the Wycomica?
That branch eventually feeds into-
That's Owen's branch, right?
Yeah.
It's Owen's branch.
Feeds under, it goes underneath-
Yeah, it eventually feeds into what, Mitchell Pond. Eventually, it works its way into the river. So, yes, so. So Pratt Road, Pratt Road, number one, the, the red line you see on that aerial picture shows the path from the Fox Chase Storm, from the Fox Chase Stormwater Pond.
It's not Fox Chase.
It's Hunter's Mill.
Oh, no.
Hunter's Mill.
Hunter's Mill, thank you.
Jumped across the river.
Long way.
Yeah. Sorry.
He walks that neighborhood.
That was in my district.
Along Pratt Road, from Pratt Road down to Pemberton into Nistale, through Nistale along Royal Mile, and then eventually out to the river. It is a straight shot out to the river, okay? That drainage area that feeds through that pipe and through those, through that, through that swale covers a drainage area of approximately 470 acres. It picks up water all the way on the other side of Nannicoke Road, and then I, what I want-
Police car.
Yeah. What I, what I want to highlight on this is that the, there was a lot of concern that, now I've got Fox Chase stuck in my head. Hunter's Mill, Hunter's Mill was the sole cause of the water that they were experiencing on Pratt Road, and it's not. There's a significant drainage that goes through this path. This is the, the path of a, of a branch. the path of a, of a branch. If none of these communities were there, you would see water going through it because it's, it's the path of, not a branch, but it's the path of water would.
So you're saying some people think or thought it was coming from Hunter's Mill, that development?
There was some concern that it was, that it was generate, the majority of the rain was coming out of Hunter's Mill. And it, I mean, there, there certainly is water from Hunter's Mill, but there was also, you know.
So you do agree there is water coming from Hunter's Mill?
No, that's where the, that's where the pond discharges.
Yes. But it's also, there's, there's other, other areas that contribute.
Yes.
I mean, is that the drainage from north of Hunter's Mill, does that all drain into Hunter's Mill, their stormwater system then? You know, the the pond and everything? Is that kind of come and supposed to hit and be collected at Hunter's Mill then?
No, the the Hunter's Mill pond only treats.
Hunter's Mill.
Hunter's Mill. Correct.
Okay.
So this is what Pratt Road looked like. I took this right off of the, you know, the YouTube videos that everybody's seen.
Yes.
Ah, there's significant water, you know, in this area. Houses were underwater. Again, this is, you know, similar scenes out to, out to Kwood. This is where we got the the eight inches of rain. We were out there, my, myself, my deputy director, we followed the path of this water all the way through, from here, all the way through the swale, through Nistale, out to the river. All of the pipes were flowing full. There was no clog. I know there's been talk of a clog. I know there's been talk of a cooler. I have no doubt that some yard debris floated over into into the ditch at one point. But I can tell you, when we were out there, the water was flowing through these pipes. The pipes were full. There was no restriction here or through Nistale.
Well, sorry.
So you're saying that if what you're saying is true, and the pipes were full, then this level right here was the same level as the river?
No, because there's a downfall gradient. I mean, if it was all, if if everything was flat, then you would see a different water level. But, you know, I mean, you're, you know, there's a, there's a down gradient. Water flows downhill. This water would just be standing there, never draining, if there was no gradient for the, for the water to go downhill. So no, it was not the same level as the.
So it was continuously flowing water going through the drainage?
Yes.
So there must have been a bottleneck that was causing this to stand while the rest was flowing?
Again, the, the, yes, the pipes were full. They were, all of the, all of the pipes along Pratt Road are thirty inch. The the pipes underneath Pemberton Drive are thirty inch. So, I mean, e- everything through there is thirty inch. So so to to touch a minute on your question of, well, let's pretend this is a branch and throw in a larger pipe. If we throw a larger pipe in for a, take that thirty up to a forty-eight, you've still got thirty inches before it, thirty inches after it. It's, hydraulically, it's not gonna make a difference to the system.
Well, how many pipes are there? Could they not all be upgri- upsized to forty-two to forty-eight?
They could all be upsized. And I would like to, let, let, let me come back to that question, because I've got.
So that's why I was gonna say, you'd have to replace all of them.
Yeah, we, well, you know, we, it's something we've considered. And let me, let me continue on with this.
Well, sorry, a little stuff. So I wasn't there on that day, but I'm told by people that were there that, that there was a backup at the culvert, the culvert that was put in before the drainage ditch that runs north and south, that basically the drainage ditch was at a lower level than the, than to the west of, I think it would be the west of the culvert. So it seemed that there was a, you know, the, the folks there say the culvert is the problem. Before the culvert was there, didn't have this stuff backing up. Culverts there is acting like a dam in situations like this, that, that the, it was, and I guess someone can correct me who was there if I'm misrepresenting what was happening. But according to the eyewitnesses there, was that, you know, the the ditch was not carrying as much water as it could have, because the culvert was acting more like a dam than, so.
What I can tell you is, and and this goes back to a statement that was made earlier. We completed the survey. This was not the survey of the entire road. We are going to survey the entire road. We're going to survey from Rockawalkin to Upper Ferry. We're going to survey not just the road, but the swales on both sides of the ditch. We're surveying the stormwater pond to check for sediment buildup. The survey we conducted in-house, because we, you know, we have a limited staff, we, we, we did this survey from that pipe all the way down to Pemberton. And what we can tell you is, there is a foot of fall from that culvert pipe all the way down to Pemberton Drive. So there is not a pipe that's higher than it's supposed to be, or angled the wrong direction. There, there's a foot of fall between, and you can't really see it here, but if it was, it would, well, it would be kind of in this area. And it would, that pipe, and we're talking about this ditch right through here, there's a foot of fall along that swale and through that pipe. So it's not, it's not acting like the dam. Now, what what I can say is that there, there are, sometimes there's the impression of, well, the pipe's angled wrong or 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 put in wrong because I see water behind the pipe. They see the pipe, and then they see the water level. Clearly, something's not right. And what happens is, a lot of times when we go in and we're asked to clean out these swales, our grade all goes in and scoops out the dirt in the bottom. And so where you have the sediment meeting the bottom of the swale, it's dug out a little deeper. And people frequently that experience flooding issues, there's usually a frequent amount of calls, come clean out the ditch, come clean out the ditch. And so to 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 try to help alleviate these concerns, we try to clean it out. But every time we clean it out, that ditch gets a little deeper. And so what you end up with is water standing behind the pipe, not because the pipe's at the wrong elevation, but just because it's been slowly dug deeper as they folks want these ditches cleaned out. And all it, it doesn't aid in the drainage. What it ends up in is, it ends up as a mosquito pond, basically. It's sitting behind there. So when you see some sediment and buildup in the ditches, it's, it's natural. It's gonna slowly, you know, the sediment's gonna slowly come back into that ditch to make it level. And then the water goes, goes through. We, we, we experience this very frequently, where the calls for cleaning out a ditch are then followed by, well, there's something wrong with the pipe because there's water behind it. But there's water behind it because the ditch is lower than the pond. So I'm gonna keep moving forward, so I can try to answer the the question about the larger pipe. Okay, so what I, what I do want to demonstrate is, this was ta, these pictures were taken on August twenty-third. This is what we, what I would consider one of our typical storms. We got two and a quarter inches of rain this, this afternoon. We were out there, we met with the folks. There was a, a large contingent of, of citizens and and representatives. This, this is the pipe that is, that there's been a lot of question about. This is the pipe that leads under our easement to the swale between Pratt Road and Pemberton Drive. The pipe is there so that we can have the road there, so that we can get our grade all and equipment across there to clean that swale out and keep it open. You, you can see here, again, two and a quarter inches of rain. There, there's a significant freeboard in that swale. There's significant capacity. The pipes are not flooded. They're not overtopped. Everything is flowing full. Not flowing full. It's, everything, everything is flowing. And 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 again, the, the reason I, you know, I put this picture on is just to show that during a, a typical storm, the system works.
Is it possible to pull that culvert out and use a temporary bridge to access to the side with the grade all?
I mean, you're talking something that's gonna have to hold a heck of a lot of, I mean, we don't, we don't have a, a temporary bridge in stock. I'm not sure. It's not like we just throw some steel plates out. I mean, if it was asphalt on both sides, but, you know, when you're talking, you know, that, that, that ditch is probably from.
Peak to peak.
Yeah, from, from, from top of bank to top of bank, you're probably talking every bit of ten foot easy, maybe twelve foot. So do you get a grade all and the dump truck that has to hold all the dirt that's taking out of the, when it's, or all the debris and stuff that's taking out when it cleans these things out? No, I, I don't think so.
I think there was some talk about the property owner, maybe allowing access, you know, from the.
From what I understand, that the, the pipe was first put in, and again, we're talking about the pipe on the Pratt roadside, because when the equipment count was coming in from Pemberton, you know, we've got the grade all, we're scooping the dirt out, we're loading it up in the truck. We get to the very end, we can't get the equipment across the ditch. So we had to do a U-turn. And this equipment does not have a small turning radius. We're going through the middle of this guy's yard, and it's tearing up the dirt. And the, and the property owner was, was not happy with the condition. So we put the, the pipe in so that we could just do a straight through drive, you know? So that was the, my understanding. So this is gonna start to try and address your concern. Remember when I, when I showed you that this pipe event in the storm drain system eventually goes through Nistale off Royal Mall and finds its way up to the river? Downstream of Pratt Road is Royal Mile, where this, where this storm drain system goes behind several people's houses. The amount of water going through this system eroded a six-foot-deep channel behind these people's houses. Okay? And this is right on the back of where their kids are playing, where they've got playground equipment. I could stand in this ditch and my top, and the top of my head would barely come up to the surface. There was significant erosion, significant downstream property damage due to the amount of rain, where we have the, the discussion from Pratt Road, make the pipes bigger, make the pipes bigger downstream. They're saying, make the pipe smaller, keep the water up. Why do we have to have any water from anywhere upstream of us? Why can't we just hold our water and just treat ours? And it's like, well, this is the natural channel, the natural path of the water. So th- this is the, this right here is, is summing up the balancing act that we're trying to do. Yes, we can go throw in larger pipes. We can tear the pipes out of, out of Pemberton, put in sixty-inch pipes everywhere. But again, the water's gotta go somewhere downstream, and that's causing more damage further and further downstream. Is it possible to sit there and and excavate and, and create large channels with stabilized entrances? Sure. You know, but we're gonna be spending tens of millions of dollars to put in systems like this. And that touches back on our design storms, which is, we have, we generally size our storm, or what's called for the two and the ten-year storm. Now, that does not mean that this storm only happens once every two years. It's a probability. It's a misnomer. It's really, does us all a disservice. The two-year storm, you put that number one over top of it, has a fifty percent chance of occurring. The ten-year storm has a ten percent chance of occurring. So when you hear that we've had the hundred-year storm four or five times in a year, or over the course of three years, that just means that storm has a one percent chance of occurring in a year. It's a probability. It's not a frequency. Okay?
Let me interrupt you very quickly.
Yeah, sorry.
They have to change the recording in the back. So we have to stop you. We have to.
That's fine.
Recede. It shouldn't.
I can take a breath now.
Yeah, I wouldn't take more.